Call me to order. Shelley, can you roll call please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. District 1, Councilman Reals is excused. District 2, Councilman Pastor.
Present.
District 3, Councilman Lethem.
Present.
Vice Mayor Stapleton is excused. Councilwoman Giles, District 5.
Present.
District 6, Councilwoman Chipley.
Here.
Mayor Gamaros.
Here.
We have a call, Mr. Mayor.
Charlene, can you lead us in the invocation, please?
Sure. Lord, help us to deliberate and make the decisions that need to be made tonight to better our community, be with all of our employees, especially our public safety forces, and also all of our residents through this holiday season, and may all that believe in you feel your love and grace this holiday season. Amen.
Jesse, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with a summary of current events, and Mike, we'll start with you on that end.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was fortunate enough to participate in the light parade, first time I've been in the parade. It's a little bit different view from there. It's, I don't know if I want to be in the parade or if I want to be outside the parade because it looked like everybody's having a good time. And what else did I do this year, this week? I attended something and I forgot. Participated in Saturday activities during the day. Copper Splash, my wife and I attended that and come to find out it's my old boss from up on the hills, so it was a lot of fun to see him and see what they were doing. And then I just, I have my grandson visiting me from his home for college and he wanted to see how government runs today, so he's going to join us for a while.
Well, I'll try to behave.
That's it, Mike?
Yeah.
Jesse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank those citizens that participated in this weekend's events. They were amazing. I went to the Read On Express with my daughter, and that's an amazing, amazing event. If you didn't get to go, please make sure you put it in your calendar for next year. That was absolutely amazing. So I just wanted to thank those people that helped with those on. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Fernando?
I really don't have much to report except I got to watch the light parade and my family all came up, and so I missed the hospital dinner for that, but I was worth it. It was a good parade.
Good. Thank you. Charlene?
Okay, I'll try to go in order. So I'd like to thank Molly Cornwell, Ginny Sunny, and Carolyn White who helped do all the food for the Center for the Arts and the Chamber Combined Mixer. There's no way that we could have got food for 100 people without these ladies' help, so thank you very much. Also, we need to really give a cheer to Johnny and Moki Flores because they put on that Battle of the Beards every year, and you know they do that on their own time at their own expense, and it's an awesome event. And they even allowed me to bring one of my little dogs that has a beard to be a contestant. So it's cool. I mean, they bring people from other areas. You know, we had people from Glendale there, we had people from Tucson there that come for this event, that come to our city for this event, and then they go and get their lunch and fill up their car with gas on the way home and what have you. So they are great community supporters. And any of you all that haven't been down to the Hila Historical Museum lately, they have what they call a Trail of Trees, and it's really well done. So Linda Lopez is the one that headed this up, and they have the history of Christmas trees, how they started, and all through the years, various trees, and just the whole history of... It's a really neat thing if you have people that are visiting to show them our museum and just go through the whole little trail there. It's well done. That museum's well done. I attended the Christmas play that was at the center by the Copper City Players. It was awesome as usual. Yeah, anybody that doesn't see those, you're missing it because they do a great job. This was kind of a comedy as well, so that was very cool. And then I'd like to also just announce on behalf of Peter Beasley, his wife Ginger, they owned Hoofen It. Ginger passed a few months ago, and they have since sold Hoofen It, but very, very good community activists and supporters. And there's going to be a Celebration of Life for her on January the 5th, that's a Sunday, the first Sunday in January. It'll be from 1:00 to 4:00 over at Dream Manor. So anybody that could come, they'd like you to RSVP to Peter, and that's on Facebook as well. But he assured me there'll be more than enough for everyone, so if you don't get a chance to RSVP and you just want to show support for that family, that would be great, just show up. And then lastly, I just want to read this letter from one of the participants in. So we used to call it Summer Youth, our Summer Youth Program. Now it's called Monsoon Youth, but it's still the same group of young people that do the plays, that act in the plays. So this is pretty cool. It says, "Dear Charlene and Stephen, my name is Natalie. I am nine, and my character is a baby rhino. I am learning the circle of life. My favorite part is singing." So that's the letter in its entirety. Anybody that wants to have a year-end donation, this is a great program, and you can send it to Monsoon Youth, PO Box 558, and that's here in Globe. The money stays here. It's any child that goes to any of our schools is eligible to be in these programs. And like this little girl says, she's learning the circle of life. It's a great thing for kids. So anybody that wants to donate, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlene. It's all been mentioned, all the great events that took place. They were amazing. I just want to mention on the light parade, I do want to thank Brandon from the shop for his design and fabrication of our float. It was amazing. I know there's a lot of people that had a lot of hands on it, but it was great. We had 12 side-by-sides that built a sled, and they built... We had the reindeer carrying Santa Claus, and we got best to show, which was great. So shout out to Brandon and his crew, all the guys that worked on it. And we won't see anybody until after the holidays. I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year for next year. That's all I have, Paul.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you very much. Yeah, both with the Festival of Lights out at Besch two weeks ago, and then last weekend, the parade, really wonderful, good celebration. And all day long, on Saturday with the Beard Battle and Read On Express and everything going on, it was hopping downtown. Just wanted to catch up on a couple things. I did meet with Stephanie, who had come call the public last two weeks ago. I put an email out, but I don't think there's any further action. We got that squared away, came to agreements what would work, and so just wanted to let you know that no further actions needed. I have not given touch bases yet with Arizona Animal Defense League. I know we need to figure out that one about whether we need to make any modifications there, and so I'll report back when I do. One of the things that is rotary, another rotary, myself and Ted Thayer, went and visited people in Heritage. We just stopped by one evening and started going from room to room saying hello. What a wonderful facility Heritage is. It's just a quality facility, very nice people, you know, taken care of, and you can just tell when you're in there, people are happy and things are going well. And so I just, it's a gem. It's a benefit that we have that in our community that available. So I was really excited about that. And I thought there was one more, but I think that's it. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. You've got one.
I forgot something. Yeah, I'm sorry. I wanted to recognize Leanna and her crew over there at Besch. So this year, I went there and, you know, participated in. So there were 5,000 of those luminaries. It was just, it was magical. I don't know another word. It was magical. But it took seven of our Public Works guys all day and half the night to make all this happen and deal with the traffic and the lighting. And it couldn't have happened without the crew there at the museum and our Public Works folks. It just couldn't have gone off. It went off so smoothly. It was so well done. And I have never seen those grounds look that well-kept. I've never seen them look that clean and well-kept. The building inside as well, it was a sight to behold. And there were 750 people that attended that event. So a lot of them were people that were from out of town and stayed overnight. So again, they were doing what they're supposed to do. They were bringing people here and getting them to spend their dollars here and stay here. Yeah, that was well done. And Richard, our Public Works Supervisor, Richard Thomas, he had all seven of his guys out there after the Christmas party, after the day after the Christmas party. At 7:00 in the morning, they were out there, and every one of those guys, it was well done. You tell them how impressed I was.
And, Mr. Mayor, that gave me a chance to remember the one I had forgotten. Just to remind everybody that after tonight, we'll be starting the remodel of the council chambers here. It's mainly carpet paint and laminates. The back wall will stay the same, but pretty much the wood will stay the same. The seats will go out and come back with the same color, and then your chairs will be there, but we're going to look for some wheels, though.
Can we have a big, cool mural or something?
Yeah, no. Well, and that was something even Stan talked about, but we're not touching that in the plan. But the point saying this is that the next meeting will be January 15th, and we'll be holding it over at the County Board of Supervisors' office or boardroom there, and possibly the 25th, depending on how, or the 27th, depending on how things go tonight. But the next meeting will be, after this one, next meeting for the City of Globe City Council will be January 15th at the County Board of Supervisors at the new courthouse.
And that'll be a Wednesday night instead of a Tuesday night?
Yes.
It'll be a Wednesday.
Well, that's a good thing you told me that.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Paul. Next, we have our first community call to the public. This is a time any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is not scheduled on this agenda may do so at this time. Comments will be addressed to the councils, the whole public body. Council is prohibited from responding to any comments, but may direct staff to follow up. Comments are limited to three minutes, and please complete one of the request-to-speak cards that are located at the back of the room here. And this is also a time any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is on the agenda may do so at this time and turn it into our clerk, and we can respond to you if it's on the agenda. So we have one card I have so far, and I have Ginny Sunny.
Ginny Sunny.
Sunny.
Thank you, Mayor Gamaros and City Council members for allowing me to come before you. I want to speak to unoccupied, derelict buildings in our neighborhood. We have many in our neighborhood, too many. Yesterday, I submitted to City Hall four citizen complaint forms of properties in our neighborhood. One of these properties was submitted in 2015, and two were submitted in 2016. It is disheartening to see these properties still derelict. What is more disheartening is that these properties are in worse condition now. Note, these properties are all unoccupied. No one would be displaced from their home if our Globe City Property Maintenance Codes were or are enforced. Three of these properties have had vagrant activity with Globe Police Department called. When can we neighbors expect these attractive nuisances to be resolved? And can we know when these unoccupied, derelict properties are cited? What stage of enforcement they are in, and when and how they are resolved? After all, we have to live with them in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ginny. And Paul, we can set up a follow-up with our code enforcement?
Follow-up with Ginny and Sue.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ginny. Special presentations and ceremonial matters. And first, we have an update to council for the 2020 Census by Michelle Yarkovich and Pima Hila County's Partnership Specialist and Havala Shoemaker. And she's coming out of Tucson. She represents us, and she'll introduce herself, though, but there's been a lot of work done, and we really need to get educated and be proactive with the 2020 Census coming up in April.
Mayor and council, I wanted to thank Havala Shoemaker for coming up today from the valley, Tucson. I know it's quite a drive, and we're excited for her to be here because the census is so important to our area, so I'll let her have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. So I am coming from Tucson. I represent Pima and Hila Counties for the U.S. Census. And first of all, I would just like to thank City of Globe and Hila County for being such great advocates and partners already and helping us build momentum up to a complete 2020 count. I'm here this evening to present myself as a resource and to just, in hopes that we can continue that momentum moving forward. Speaking of momentum, so today, December 17th, marks 105 days out until Census Day, which is April 1st, and 86 days until self-response begins on March 12th, 2020. So when I came on board in March, we were more than a year out. There was no real sense of urgency. Now we have less than three months. If I do my job, every single person will be waiting at their mailbox on March 12th, excited to respond, excited to represent their communities, and we really have very little time remaining to make sure that everybody is aware that the census is coming, understands how it impacts their communities, and understands how vital those responses are to funding and to representation. So just as a reminder, the 2020 Census will be the first time that there are four ways to respond. Our preference is online or by phone. Every household will receive an invitation to respond between March 12th and 20th, and then we will be extremely persistent in reminding people to respond between then and the end of April. In total, there will be four reminders, but folks can respond online, by phone, by a mail-in form if we do not hear from them, by the fourth mailing, or we'll send census takers around to visit homes in person. Of course, we know from experience that data is more reliable if people self-respond, and so the first thing that we really want to make sure of is that everybody is comfortable with a self-response process and feels empowered to fill out that form. A few dates that you should keep in mind. So I mentioned that we're just, you know, three months out from the count, but the count actually begins in less than a month in remote Alaska, so we're right around the corner. March 2nd through 6th is Statistics in Schools Week, so this is when we're asking all schools in the county and in the city to participate by using some of our curricular materials, reinforcing the use of statistics, and talking about the census, and also hopefully building up to some self-response events at the schools themselves. Again, self-response begins March 12th. We are asking churches and houses of worship to participate in a census worship weekend, March 27th through 29th. That could be something as simple as just a mention from the pulpit of the importance of the census to the community. Census Day is April 1st. The group quarters count begins for people in assisted living facilities, hospitals, transitory locations in April. We begin sending people out to knock on doors in May, so again, if folks do not want people knocking on the doors, best thing to do is respond between March 12th and the end of April. And then the last day to self-respond is July 31st, so again, right around the corner. I do have... So the rest of this presentation, I really just wanted to give you some of the updates about the new and improved public outreach materials we have. I'll say that we've gotten a lot better, I think, at talking in plain language, and this is one example of that. What is the 2020 Census? Every 10 years, the census records everyone living in this country. It's written in the Constitution and comes in a questionnaire that counts everyone who lives at your address on April 1st. The data can be used to inform funding for services like fire stations, schools, clinics, and representation that affect your community. Shake your future. Start here. Visit 2020census.gov. So those are 20 to 30 seconds. They can be downloaded, edited, voiced over with comments from people in your community if you want to make something a little bit more specific to Globe. So highly encourage use of those PSAs on city websites, county websites, really any place that you think people might be likely to look. They include everything from confidentiality to how to respond. So again, just have a quick look. The next slide here is Census tract 11, which is where Globe is located. Again, a census tract is anything from 1,500 to 4,000 people, so Globe is within a census tract containing that number. I highlight this because this is a snapshot from a tool called Response Outreach Area Mapper, or Rome, that describes using the results from a variety of surveys, including American Community Survey, what some of the key characteristics of your community is, and how likely we think it is that people will self-respond. So that LRS, we love our acronyms, up at the top there is the low response score, which means that we think about 23.2% means that we think about 23.2%, about a quarter of households will not self-respond to the census. That doesn't mean they won't be counted, but that does mean that we'll need to follow up and again, self-response is more accurate. So that's what we're up against. The one thing that I wanted to highlight is that number at the bottom, that 38.31% of households with no internet access. One thing you may want to consider is hosting self-response events in locations where people might feel comfortable going and using the computer, because we know in our rural areas that internet access is going to be a major limiter to that online response.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Absolutely.
I was told that you can't respond several times under the same IP address. So if someone wanted to go to the library, use their computer and log on to do the census, that it would start to error some of those out because of the IP address? Is that correct or not?
No. So one response is accepted per physical address, per household address, but the IP address is immaterial. And in fact, all of that information that, that goes in via the online response, you're given a unique identifier number. You can only use that once, but the IP address is immaterial. You can respond several times from the same computer. So if you go to a library, you should be fine. Thank you. So to that point, we do now have a Respond to the 2020 Census Here poster that I would love to see up in libraries and other places where we are encouraging self-response, just so people know that they are able to respond at that location. This one is not new. This is old, this confidentiality handout, but I like to say it again and again in every presentation because it has not changed. Census data is confidential under Title 13 of the U.S. Code. We can be fined $250,000 and thrown in prison for five years for disclosing census information. That protection cannot be overturned by executive order. So just, I, I've...
Even the IRS?
Even the IRS.
People want to know that.
So the thing I love, most of our handouts are very, very wordy, as is this one. We love our data, we love our numbers. The thing I like about this handout is that it is very explicit about who we cannot share information with, which includes the IRS, the CIA, Customs and Border Protection, local code enforcement. Really important that people know that their responses will not get them evicted, will not get them, you know, taken to tax court, will not get them deported, right? Very important that people understand that. The census questionnaire is available in English and Spanish for preview online. So if people are not comfortable or want to learn more about what will be appearing at their door in terms of a paper form, this is exactly what it will look like, questions one through nine, both in English and Spanish, and the web address is there.
So I have a question there at that point.
Yes, ma'am.
How do you get the form? Because I am not going to go online and answer a bunch of questions, nor am I going to be on the phone for 20 minutes. I'm just not going to. I want the form. I'll fill it out and I'll mail it in. And a lot of us are going to be in that boat, so how do we get that form?
So first of all, we, we would love for you to fill out online or by phone, but we realize that some people are not going to like that option very much at all. On the fourth mailing, every household will get the census form. So all you need to do at that point is wait for it. We are not, you won't be able to call in and get it, but there are going to be zero households that do not receive a paper form if you don't self-respond. So that will be sometime in early April and my best advice then is just get it in as quick as possible because we start to send enumerators out very soon after that.
That's a shame that you have to go through that though, you know, that we need to expedite that so somebody doesn't have to waste all that time and postage and energy on four mailings.
So, yeah, there, there is, there is an important caveat in Hila County, which is that in rural areas that do not receive mail at their home. So if you receive mail at a post office box, those houses will get the census form in their first distribution, not a mailing, but somebody will actually deliver it to their door. Someone at a higher pay grade than me made the decision about, you know, how many mailings folks would get, but everyone will have the option of a paper form if they want it. There is an accessibility handout, so if you have larger populations of older adults or people who are concerned about, you know, maybe hearing impairments, visual impairments, accessibility in terms of answering, this is some good information for them. I like this FAQ sheet because it includes how, when, why, budget, apportionment, all in one place. This one is maybe the biggest one I get, which is, um, do I have to answer every question on the census form and why is that important? And while we certainly need the number of people in every household, we do want every question answered because there is a statutory reason that every question is on there and that reason is often tied very closely to, to the distribution of federal funds. And so if you do get those questions about, hey, why is it that I need to tell you my gender or my race or my ethnicity, this is a good place to start to kind of puzzle out why on earth we would need that information. And then finally, I'm close to the end, but the census is trying to be very transparent in advance of 2020 in terms of what we're doing, why we're doing it, what's true, what's not true. This is a confusing and information-rich time and you can't always tell truth from fiction. There is a Fighting Census Rumors website to which you can submit questions. So, you know, if you hear a community member saying, "I heard that they were going to send IRS agents out with census workers, is that true?" You can directly submit a question like that and get an answer that's publicly posted.
And the answer is no.
And the answer is no. All right. So this is my, my final ask, well, the last thing I will ask for, but the not, not the last time I'll ask for it. We are still looking for community members, organizations to help us spread the word that the census is easy, safe, and important. I can stand in front of you here tonight and I hope that I am in enough of a position of trust that you believe me, but I know that all of the members of the community, if I walk up to their door, I'm not the person that they are most going to believe. They're going to be, going to believe you, they are going to trust the people who are their ministers, their friends, the people in the grocery store line behind them, their teachers, and those are the people who we need to be fully informed so that when those conversations happen and people have questions, the community knows how to answer. And we are still looking for people to work for us. So in Hila County, that's 1450 an hour. We're still looking for workers, we're still recruiting, we're about at our recruiting goals and we're starting to call people in December and January, but if you are, if you know anybody looking for part-time work, we would still love to have them.
And how old does one have to be?
18.
And who would they contact locally?
So there is no local point of contact for the application process. It's just 2020census.gov/jobs and it's one online application, either in English or in Spanish. And I'm happy to take your questions.
Fernando? I know the answer to this because I was just in a census meeting, but I thought maybe not everybody would know the answer. And that is, for example, if you have a guest house or something where someone else is residing, you, the owner of the property, need to count them because they reside at your address.
Yes. So very important and one of the reasons I mentioned that we do not share information with code enforcement. Every residential address will receive an invitation to respond, but beyond that, we don't have a way of, of keeping track. So everyone at one residence is considered a member of the household, even if it's just Cousin Bob who's couch surfing or somebody living in a guest house who you haven't told Michelle about. Every single person at a residential address. Yeah, thank you for that.
Havala, thank you very much. And I want to thank Michelle also has done a lot of work with this in participating in the Complete Count Committee in the last, in the last six months, really.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to, I have a couple of follow-ups, so I, I just wanted to do a couple of things. The, um, so replying online is encrypted, it's safe. We do our banking online, I do my banking on my phone. The, talk about the, the security and safety online. I mean...
Happy to, although I am not a confidentiality expert, I would encourage you to do a search for a video on differential privacy that is available and was done in consultation with some math outfit. But essentially, there are more layers of encryption for census data that you provide online than there are for most hospitals, for most banking operations, and the information is not housed. So if you start your, your census form online and then don't finish it, it's not stored somewhere, you have to start over and that's because immediately after that app, that information is submitted, it's all put into a different, a different location. So it's not as though someone can log in behind you and find your information either. So extremely safe, have a whole team of people working on that.
Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, can you do it on your phone?
Yes. There is not an app. We're always at least 10 years behind the technology curve, but you can go to 2020census.gov on your phone and do it.
Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, to the speaker, do, about how long will it take online?
So here's, here's your quick and punchy talking point. Takes about 10 minutes. It's less than 10 questions, impacts 10 years of funding and representation.
Okay, good. And the, if they do come door-to-door, they're going to have credentials, correct? They're going to have, they'll have heavy duty, can you describe what, how you identify a census worker when they come to your house?
So I have my name tag and not my badge on me right now, but they will have a government ID badge that's got a chip and a picture and U.S. Census Bureau on it. They'll also have an electronic advice, device labeled with the Census Bureau, a bag, and if you're still not sure, there is a number that you can call to the Denver Regional Center to verify that the person there is who they say they are.
And they won't be asking for your social security number, your date of birth, your mother's maiden name, or anything else like that?
So they will be asking for your date of birth, only to confirm age, but they will not be asking for your social security number, bank account number, or political campaign contributions, which is actually something that we do want to be on the lookout for as this is an election year.
And, um, Mr. Mayor, the Members of Council, about, we collect about $400 per person for state share distribution. We know we don't have that many more people that moved here, but we have a stronger count. That's, that's over 10 years, that's $4,000 that, that we use to fund city services, provide for everybody. And that's why it's so important to get, you know, just a, a fair count of what we have, so we can get our fair share. If we, if we don't collect it, someone, some other city will get it. And, and the last thing, I know a lot of people kind of go, this is, this is old school. This is in the Constitution, a 10-year count. I mean, so if, for the people who are constitutionalists or believe that, you know, we're, all this technology and stuff like that, this is something that the, the founding fathers, framers said we need to do and so we're, you're doing your duty that way, just like jury duty by filling this out. So just, we're, we'll be, we'll be, Mayor's all over this and I think Council's all over it and we're all, we're on board, so. And if anybody has any questions out there, just come talk to any of us.
Can I add one more thing real quick? There's another rumor that's going around that the schools were worried about counting kids and so they were going to be doing something to count them. That is not the school's job, that's your job to count everybody in your household or at your residence.
So it is, it is every household's job to count people at their residence. We are asking for schools' participation in helping spread awareness to parents, provide opportunities to respond online, provide information via statistics and schools. We want, especially because we know that children via their teachers are a great way to reach parents, but the schools will not be doing the count. That is, that is each individual household. Thank you.
And I think, I want to mention also, some of the outreach we're going to be doing is through our senior center. Also, Adria with the library is going to be an important part of this whole census county because we're going to have stations available there for people to go in and, and allow them to, to sign up with computers there at the library also.
And Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, I'm, I know Danny's back there, his wheels are turning, but I don't know why we couldn't have a kiosk in the, in the front office when people come to pay their water bill, that they could just, you know, if they're curious about it, they can just sit down and take that 10 minutes.
That'd be great.
I can't guarantee that we can, you know, internet and all that good stuff, but, because Danny hates it when I put him on the spot like this, but I don't...
He's saying money costs money.
Or he's going to, he's going to melt this for some cash, but, but I, I mean, that would be perfectly fine if we just allow somebody to say, hey, if you'd like to, you can go to the library, you can come here, sit down right now and take care of it.
Yeah. Again, thank you so much for your support and I, I do want to reiterate, I am a resource for you, so if you have thoughts like that, need some help thinking through stuff, just have a question, I'm always available via email or phone, happy to, happy to help.
Thank you, Havala.
Thank you.
Next, we have introductory discussion regarding department updates. I'm sorry, wrong one. Item C. We're, oh, we're on B. Presentation Direction About the Benefits of, to the City of Globe in Joining the Municipal Power Exchange. Kelly Urbine.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, you've seen Kelly before. I'm just going to let her introduce herself and, and get you going and give a little primer of what's going on here. There you go. She needs no introduction.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. My name's Kelly Urbine and I have a small energy consulting company and we've been working with the City of Globe since about 2014 to secure an allocation of federal hydropower from the Hoover Dam. And then we've continued to work with the city in managing that allocation and trying to get the best financial benefit for the city possible. So the issue before you today is the option to join a power pool that is something that, an idea that we have had for some time. And it's called the Municipal Power Exchange. And I'll describe the benefits of that in a minute and tell you, you know, how this might be a good idea for Globe to save some more money. But I thought it might be a good idea to give you a little bit of background on the program and how we got here, because I know there are some people that are new or others that have forgotten. It's not something that you deal with every day. So with your permission, I'll go ahead and give you a little bit of history so that you can put this current issue in context. So most of you know that the Hoover Dam was built in the 30s as a flood control and irrigation project up against Lake Mead and in Boulder City, Nevada. And it generates power as water is released through the dam and flows down through the Colorado River downstream. So the power is then sent to a nearby substation called the Mead Substation, which is the point where utilities and, and other recipients pick up the power and then it goes to the allez-de-les. Globe did get an allocation and that started, is a 50-year contract for this power. That started in October of 2017 and the contract goes through the end of September 2067. So there are a few different agencies involved. They all have acronyms and it becomes a little bit confusing because of the way that they interact. But basically, Bureau of Reclamation is a federal agency that runs the dam, it's responsible for the dam's operations and for the water. Western Area Power Administration, which is also called WAPA or Western, deals with the power that's generated by the dam and they market that, that federal power to public agencies in their marketing area. For Hoover Dam, this is Southern California, the state of Nevada, and the state of Arizona. In Arizona, we have yet another agency that we have to go through. It's called a through agency. It's a state agency that's basically the intermediary between you and WAPA and it's called the Arizona Power Authority. So most of Globe's contacts will be with the Arizona Power Authority. They issue the bills, you schedule your power through, through them and you pay your power bill to them. So most of the time, the city will be interacting just with that state agency. We interact with all three agencies and the water and the electricity is very interconnected. As you know, because of the drought, you know, we're getting less power out of the dam than we could. And I'll go into that in a moment. But basically, after the, the dam started generating power, it issued 50-year contracts. Those went through 1987. The next contracting period was 30 years and then Globe came on board in 2017 as a result of an act of Congress, which made a, it's called the Hoover Power Allocation Act of 2011, which created a 5% carve-out for new entities. The goal was for more widespread use. The power has typically in Arizona gone just to irrigation and electrical districts and mainly for the purposes of agricultural water pumping. So this was a really big deal because the power is very highly sought after, because it's cheap and it's reliable. Also, carbon neutral, although old hydropower like the Hoover Dam is not considered renewable, it is carbon neutral energy and it does have some other engineering to interesting things that would appeal to people more on a utility level that make it very attractive. But for our purposes, it's much less expensive than the retail rates that you typically have to pay to APS. So it creates a little bit of an offset where you get some savings. How it all works, as I mentioned, the power goes to that Mead Substation. You have an agreement with APS, your retail electric service provider, which offers you a bill credit. The bill credit is a special tariff that was approved by the Arizona Corporation Commission and it sets the rates at which APS will compensate you for this power. So basically, you get the power, you pay the APA your power bill. APS then reflects that as a bill credit and subtracts that off of your power bill and you have the specified a well, well number two on East Highway 70. Then that is a large enough service that you will absorb all the Hoover power in a given month. given month. So that is kind of how it, it works operationally. APS takes it into its system, and we don't know where the electrons actually go, but they do give you credit for that power on your retail bills. Now, the Municipal Power Exchange is something that we've been working on for a while, and it was approved last month by the APA. It has four initial members. Those are Phoenix, Flagstaff, Sedona, and Payson. And there are a couple other cities that are considering it and running through the approval process and discussing it, and councils very much like this one. It's basically an enabling document, paperwork that the APA requires that allows you to optimize your allocation within certain rules that they have set. And those are basically common sense things that your contracts with the APA for the power and with APS for the bill credit can find you to anyway. But the Municipal Power Exchange is a power pool. And the idea of being in a power pool is it allows you to optimize your Hoover power allocations by working with other cities. And I think you could think of it as an insurance policy in case something happens to any one of the members. For example, if your pump fails on this service where you have the bill credit, and you can't use your Hoover power, you're still going to get a bill from the APA. And if you're in a power pool, you can ask one of your partners that's in the pool if you can schedule your power to go to them that month, and then you can get it back in a, in a future month. So it just gives you a little bit more flexibility in scheduling your power. That's why that's helpful. So the first benefit is scheduling power. The other benefit is something that we call firming power, the ability to buy wholesale power to get you back to your fully allocated amount. Now, when the power allocations were made, you received an allocation of about 516 megawatt hours per year. And the allocations were made based on the dam operating under ideal conditions, which never actually occur in real life. And because now we're in an extended drought period, the less water is in Lake Mead, currently it's at about 40%, the less, I guess you could say thrust going against the turbines, you get less power out of the dam. Additionally, there are other factors. And just this month, since we've had a wet month, there are fewer water orders downstream from the Hoover Dam. So the energy is greatly reduced. So you have, on the one hand, the drought creating less than optimal conditions, and then wet conditions, which, you know, also lessen the energy output from the dam. So the firming power is a way for you to get back up to your fully allocated amount. So right now, you're getting about 75 to 80% of what your allocation is. The first year of this program, we just started the third year. It goes by water year, October through the end of September. So in year one, out of the 516 megawatt hours that you're allocated, you received actual amount of 410. Year two was 398, and because of the drought contingency plan, which was triggered by the low levels at the dam, you are forecast to receive 358 megawatt hours this year out of your 516. That is a shortfall of 158 megawatt hours, which is considerable. And the ability to order firming power is simply a way for you to get back up to your fully allocated amount by buying wholesale power. This is priced the same as what APS pays for it on the wholesale market. So we did this on a very small scale in October for Globe. We ordered 10 megawatt hours of firming power. And we do that directly with WAPA. And that, they were able to get it at $22 a megawatt hour, which your bill credit from APS ranges seasonally from about $56 to $70. So you can see how $22 power is, is, does create quite a lot of profit for you.
Did you say 50 cents to?
56.
Oh.
So, yeah, it's confusing because kilowatt hours, you normally see that on your own electric bill. Megawatt hours are a factor of 1,000. So 1,000 kilowatt hours makes one megawatt hour. So I'm just talking in megawatt hours because it's easy to be consistent across. But the amount that we ordered for Globe in October of 10 megawatt hours is enough to power about, I would say, eight average homes for a month. So, just to give you an idea of the scale. So the other thing, you know, I did mention the ability to lay your power on and off. That's just scheduling flexibility that the power pool provides. The firming power is something I think is very important to keep you in the black. You never have to risk going in the red, and it, and it keeps you profitable. And if, you know, in my opinion, if you're not doing the firming, you're just leaving money on the table each month. So we're really grateful to the federal agency and to the APA for getting this going. We've been working on, on doing this for a while, and we finally got it operational with all these agencies in October. So basically, I think the Municipal Power Exchange is a good way to just add a free insurance policy onto your Hoover allocation that you have.
Questions, comments? Mike?
Questions. You said that, that each member of the group is allocated so much. And you gave some numbers for the first year, the second year, and the third year. And the first year was almost the full allocation, and second year was a little bit less, and third year was quite significant. Now, we don't get our full allocation, but do we get a credit?
No. Well, yeah, this is just for Globe. The numbers that I quoted are just for the city. And you have been getting just whatever the dam produces. So if you're not ordering that firming power monthly and following the, the wholesale prices, you're just getting whatever the dam gives you. And then your credit from APS is based on the actual amount that you receive from the dam.
Okay.
So, yeah, once it's under, water under the bridge, under the, yeah, yeah, that's, that's gone. But we're hoping to capture future opportunities because based on the differential prices between the members of the groups, there are other opportunities that you may wish to engage in, in the future. Because the APS bill crediting program has three different tiers. Some allottees that have large allocations have the same number that they get credited every month of the year. Globe, having a smaller allocation, gets quite a bit higher in the summer and a little bit lower in the winter. But based on how you schedule the power and how you can kind of move it between the group, you can create headroom to order some of the power, the wholesale, that might even be cheaper than the Hoover power. Right now, the first five years of the program are the most expensive for the recipients, because we have to pay repayable capital investments to the previous contractors who made, paid for through rates improvements to the dam that you're now reaping the benefits of. So after those initial payments are made, those are built into the rates, then you really take off with the profits. So, you know, years six through 50 are going to be considerably better. But already, the first two years, you've saved about $17,000. After all, your costs are paid, so. And the rate, the Hoover rate right now, it's about $43 per megawatt hour. The wholesale power we got was 22. So in a sense, the reductions in the dam create a little bit more headroom for you to get even cheaper power at times.
I wasn't here when this was first brought up, so this is all new to me. I had a couple of questions. You kept, one of the documents kept referring to layoff. And then there was a document that had all the definitions, but layoff wasn't in the definitions. So is that when you're not using your, your allocation available to you, so you put it on hold, it goes back into the group?
Right. Yeah, exactly. So you would schedule that power to another recipient. So if you did not want to take your power in a given month because of equipment failure or any other reason, then you would ask one of the partners to accept that Hoover power. And operationally, how that works is that we would just tell the APA to schedule that power to Flagstaff or Phoenix or one of the other members for that month. And then, you know, we keep track of that for you, and you take it, lay it on in another month.
And then the original allocation, was that based on historic use of power for that location?
Well, it was based on the, the city's entire electric load. And so, you know, when these allocations were made, I think the largest recipients were limited to three megawatts of capacity. And I can't tell you right offhand what that, what that is in, in energy megawatt hour, or, yeah, megawatt hours. But that's significantly less than some of the historic recipients who got something like 20 megawatts, 40 megawatts. Three is, is small. It's part of that 5% carve-out.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I had one other question. So if we don't use, so we take a layoff, does that go into only, do all the other partners in the consortium, or whatever we call it, they have excess need so they can use it? Or does that then go back out on the market to be sold to whoever wants it?
It just goes to the other partners. Everybody has more load than, than what the Hoover is providing, you know. So it just fulfills a small fraction of your overall electric need.
Okay.
Yeah.
Shirley?
Okay, so who's the keeper of the data? Who requests these, these allotments and, and the firming and?
That would be us. So we follow the wholesale prices. The allocations are made. Those are set in stone. So the number that you get, that's 50 years, that can't be changed. But in terms of the monthly operations and, you know, ordering the firming power and that sort of thing, and keeping track of where all the power's going in any given month, that falls to us.
So, so you are asking for the firming for the City of Globe? That is currently going on?
Yes. Yeah, we would be responsible for that. And how we do that is we are following the wholesale prices that we get from the Western Area Power Administration. Some months, it's not worth doing. We have to compare it against your bill credit. So we don't want to go out in July and order market power that's $72 when you're only getting a $70 credit. So we're trying to take advantage of the differences between the partners in the group and take advantage of the seasonal differences in your bill credit. So for example, you, APS considers April a summer month, and the bill credit for you is about $70 a megawatt hour. But the power, wholesale power prices are forecast to be pretty good for that month. And so that would be a month when we would really want to, you know, maximize on our firming for that time period, because it would save you the most money.
Yes.
Being part of the pool, if, if we couldn't use the power, something went down, do the other participants in that have to accept, or can they deny?
I guess they could deny, I, you know.
No reason to, but could they?
Yes.
What happens then? We just pay that price for it, no matter what?
I guess you would be stuck, yeah. But we have good partners in the group, you know. And I know that there, there may have been some concern about having some that are kind of smaller cities and then having a large city, Phoenix, and how did we choose them? And I, I told Paul that these are the people that we have been working with for a while. And having somebody like Phoenix, they got a larger allocation, but it's actually proportionally smaller based on their load than your allocation. So they do get, since they have a larger allocation, their benefit from APS, their bill credit, is the same every month of the year. They don't have a seasonal difference. But they have, you know, an unlimited amount of load. So they could take your, your Hoover any month. And we have another partner in the group now, Flagstaff, and they have 100% renewable goal. And so they're very eager to get any kind of renewable or carbon neutral power. And so they're a very good partner to have in the group because they, I would think, would be always willing to take it.
And this, we can, this power can only be used where we stated it will be used in the agreement?
The agreement with APS requires that you stipulate one primary location, and that is well number two. And then it allows you to list two additional locations where the power can cascade in the event that number one can't be used. So the odds are good that if you did have a, have a failure at the primary location, that you would probably be able to use it at your other two. But, you know, this just creates a little bit additional flexibility. And, you know, it doesn't cost anything, so, you know, why not?
Mike?
One question. Okay, so right now, group two is four participants. Is that, does that grow, or?
It can grow. All it requires right now is for, in your instance, is just to sign a one-page document that is an attachment to that original, already approved agreement. That just has to be signed by a city official and submitted to the APA. And then any future participants can also join at any time. And we're hoping that they will, because, you know, like I said, if, if you're not doing this sort of thing, you're just walking away from money on the table. And I know that the federal agency, WAPA, is, is very eager to make sure everybody makes good use of their allocations. And especially with the drought, you're going to have, you know, situations where you're really not getting that much energy out of the dam.
Because they will put restrictions on the flow.
Yes.
If it gets to a certain level, I think. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, I, I believe, and I'm not a water expert. I'm more of an energy expert. But the, my understanding is that up until this point, the drought contingency plan wasn't, didn't issue restrictions because the voluntary measures that were being taken were considered adequate. But the level at Hoover has gone down, or at Lake Mead, to the point where it is triggering the DCP restrictions. And that's where, where I got the, the forecast number for 358 megawatt hours for this year that we're currently in.
Just an off-the-cuff question. Is Pinell County involved in any type of this energy consortium or what's going on? Are they in a group, or?
Well-
Or are there more groups than just group two?
There are, the, the historic customers, the ag customers, the districts that have been getting the power since 1937, they have been in a power pool like this. And I think those are group one in the, the APA lingo.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
This is Terry Urbine, my partner.
I have a little more history in this area, so I feel comfortable answering your questions specifically. The county of Pinell is not a participant, though. City of Maricopa is, Paul's old hometown. And the agricultural districts in that county are members of what's known as the Resource Exchange?
Program, yeah.
Program, the REP, which was put in place for agricultural purposes in 1984 or '87. Because if you're growing alfalfa and you, you need water some months, so you need energy to pump. And then if you're growing cotton, it's a different month. So they wanted to be able to swap power between each other. And those people are still in that group.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, on the, like I say, we're supportive of this because it gives us the option, you know, to, to buy this power at wholesale. But also on, on the, if well, if well two is not utilizing the power, I believe that our, our alternatives are well one and well three are there. And, and if all three of those are down, we got bigger problems than where the power is going. So, so that's a pretty safe bet. I don't, I don't see many scenarios where we would not be utilizing the power maybe a day or two as we swap out a pump or something.
I got, just a clarification. So I'm really having a hard time seeing where we have much to lose here. The biggest risk would be that we couldn't use the power, but with the partners that we have-
We could share.
We can share the power, so we, and we hopefully could get some of it back later. We can share the power, so we, and we hopefully could get some of it back later, right? That's what this agreement is for.
Right, right. Your city manager's correct. The, a pump failure on one of your wells is not likely to, to, you know, crash the system. You probably would be able to use your Hoover power at the other sites that are specified in your APS agreement. The downside to, to joining this power pool, I can't really see any. There's no cost. It just gives you a little bit more flexibility. There are times in the future when you might want to create more headroom to, to get more firming power because it is cheaper than Hoover. So a scenario might be where Flagstaff is eager to get renewable power or carbon neutral and they want the Hoover, they want as much as they can get. And the firming power that you order, if you specify that it must be renewable, it's, it's quite a bit more expensive than if you don't, if you just take whatever the market gives you. And so Flagstaff might be interested in taking Globe's Hoover power and free up some headroom for Globe to get the 22 or $28 power, which is cheaper than Hoover even. So, and your Hoover's cheaper than market renewable power for Flagstaff. So in that way is, is, you know, just a way for cities to work together to kind of have a good thing for everyone.
Thank you, Kelly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Kelly, thank you for answering all my questions.
Oh, thank you so much. We're always available too if you have future questions. And at the last meeting, I also said that if there are any council members or city employees or community members that are interested in touring the dam, we can set that up. And it's, if you've never been there, it's quite a wonder to behold. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kelly.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I imagine the council is supportive of this return, of returning this for, for final action. This will be the first, first read, but I see a very nodding in affirming that we should bring this back and, and join. So we'll, we'll put it on the next.
Need a motion to do that?
What's that?
Do we need a motion to do that to bring it back?
No, because it's a, this is a presentation, so it's just direction.
Okay, we, next we have discussion and consideration to approve a proposed mural to be painted on the Globe Public Library Building. Adri.
More murals, huh? No, that's good. It's a good idea, it's good. Yeah. It's just I don't want everybody to...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I am really excited to be before, before you all tonight. Anytime there's an opportunity to get some beautification to the library, I am definitely all for it. And so tonight I have with me Bradley Pollak, who's an Eagle Scout candidate, his aunt Carrie Graham, who's an artist, and also Rachel Hansen, who's another artist. So I was approached by Bradley with the proposal of potentially doing his Eagle Scout project as a mural for the library. It would be a piece of artwork that would be on the wall that faces the teepee side of the street. Currently, that wall is blank and there is a fence that surrounds that area. So it's really not very pretty to look at. This really would help to beautify the library. And so we are looking for direction and coming to you all as a property owners and hopefully seeking your permission to move forward with this project.
You didn't have a picture of the mural to show to the public, though? We didn't have one on our overhead?
So I, I don't think that it was uploaded into the presentation tonight. But it did.
It's very cool. It's books in a globe.
So it is, it is books. It's a representation of a bookshelf and it has a globe on there. It also has a bust from Benjamin Franklin, who is like the founder of libraries. And it has an open book and in that open book would be a painting of the original Old Dominion Library, which I think is amazing. You know, I was born and raised in Globe and I know how important our history is. So I just think this is an amazing opportunity to showcase the history in Globe and also help Bradley with his project. So it would have multiple benefits to do this. And if it's okay, I would like to turn the microphone over to Bradley. If that's all right?
Thank you. So I'm here tonight first to ask for your approval now and next month, right? And then also to answer any questions you have about the mural itself.
Yeah, just an explanation. The reason it came to us first because the city owns the building and that, that's a first step. But usually it goes to Historic Preservation, which will go next, and then come back to us from their recommendation.
Right.
That's, so it kind of worked, it'll be back to us twice because we own the building.
Yes.
Will these books be the full length of the wall itself?
So for the majority of them, the books will go all the way to the top of the wall. Some of them to create some kind of a 3D effect will make some of them smaller. And then in addition, the book titles, we're planning on having about half of them be titles that were written from authors in Globe. And then the other half be classic books. That will kind of give some recognition and recollection from people who have read them and who are driving by the library.
This is great. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome. And, and I saw that you had already secured funding, so how'd you do that? That's pretty awesome, too.
It was, and it was a huge blessing. I was able to talk with the Friends of the Globe Public Library and ask if they would donate funds enough for me to be able to purchase supplies and tools needed to complete this project. And they were willing to donate, I believe it was no more than $400. I think it was $350 to $400 that they were willing to donate with this project, which will definitely be enough.
Well done.
Thank you.
With approval, when's your start date? Just as soon as you get approval or?
Once we get approval, we're looking at a Saturday or Friday in late January.
Okay.
And, and I do want to add that since this is Bradley's Eagle Scout project, he is in charge of, you know, the logistics of it all. He's in charge of planning for volunteers to come help with this as well. But Carrie and Rachel will be the, the leads in terms of the actual artwork. So I don't know if either of them want to say anything.
Carrie?
I don't know.
Do you have any questions about it?
I have a quick comment.
Go ahead, Fernando.
Okay, I'm not an expert on painting, but I have been told that paint doesn't stick sometimes if it's too cold. So that might be something to keep up here because, does anybody know that? But yeah, I've heard if it's too cold, the paint won't last like it should. FYI.
Part of the funding that I was granted was for a precoat and a glaze. That will make sure that that will stay on there rainproof and hopefully weatherproof for a good time, a good amount of time.
Good.
I have one question.
Mike?
With the, with the overhead cover, do you think that's going to hinder the, the line of sight to see the mural or not? Nope?
No.
Okay.
If you drive by, there is an overhang, but it's not big enough to obstruct view of the wall.
Okay, no. All right. So you have enough room, though, for, you're going to do ground to the, to the top, I guess, or is, okay.
Variety.
Yeah.
There it is.
There it is, we got it on.
What a great project. Thank you.
Thanks for putting that on. We see it, but they, they haven't seen it.
Is the clock going to work?
Okay, just a couple more comments.
Thank you, Daniel.
The, the reason we put a globe on there was for the City of Globe. The open book, we want to put something historic or a landscape from Globe, something related to Globe. And then the reason why we wanted it color-coded was just to make it more visually appealing. The door, that's in the, between the orange and red books will also look like a book of some sort, like we, and the reason why we put the clock on there is because there's like a little box that's already kind of that shape. And we wanted to make it look like it was something related to the wall.
Okay.
Is that Shakespeare or who's that?
Benjamin Franklin. He's the first person to make a library public because there had been libraries before that, like the Library of Alexandria, but the first person to make it like known to the public, especially in the United States.
Very good.
That'll be great. Thank you. We want more murals in town. All right.
Yeah, good job.
You had asked for a motion, Paul. You had asked for a motion.
No, don't.
Not this presentation, is it?
I may have been mistaken if I did.
You, you asked for a motion. It says recommended motion to approve a proposal to paint a mural on the north wall of the Globe Public Library Building.
Oh, that would be my faux pas. No, it's a present.
You don't need a motion.
No, we don't. It's a...
It has to go back to the Historic Preservation and back to us.
Assuming by the applause that, that you're, you're in support of adding this to our building. And so she's already, Adri has already talked to, to Historical Downtown, the Historical Committee.
Preservation.
Preservation. It'll get on that agenda. And then that'll be, get a recommendation for or against, and then it'll come back to the city as part of that process. And if, if you finally approve that, then they'll have what they need. And I believe it's going to go pretty quick.
Yeah, and it should be back at our next meeting. We're hoping it'll be an action item then, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, next we have introductory discussion regarding department updates for future agendas. Paul?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, this is just something that I wanted to float by, ask council about, through the, the 26 so meetings or 12, 24 meetings that we have, about 11 departments that, that you see updates in your emails from. And once a year, to allow each of those department or managers to come up and, and speak to council, I was thinking 11 minutes sounds like a good amount of time for 11 departments. And just to share what's going on, what they want you to know about, they, they look for your guidance, they look for your support to, to follow what you know, and what you want from them. And so just a chance for them to come up and whatever they want to come up and share with you, their presentation, no PowerPoints allowed. Jerry is one of those 11 departments. And so, but I know time is, is of an essence. You know, we, we're trying to keep our meetings below three hours, you know, so.
We're doing real good today.
We, you know, we, we might bump the, the presentation if it's going to, you know, if it's a, a long meeting or anything like that. But before, I was thinking we start this out the January 15th, so just wondering, yeah, the council's idea. Okay.
Not 11 groups in 11 minutes, it's...
No, 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 it's not, yeah, that, no, not, we're not doing 11. That would be, you know, 100 and, I don't know how many. But no, one, one department or manager an evening for 11, 11 council agendas. Okay? And that, and that would mimic the, the, what we're sending out to you each, each Monday night now. So, okay.
And it wouldn't be mandatory that they do 11 minutes, would it?
No, no, they can do three.
They gotta do 11 minutes.
I, I will tell you, if we get, if we get Tammy from Active Adults, she will say, "Going well." And, and so we might get, you know, so, no, it's not mandatory, but I, I think it's a chance for them, unfiltered, come up to you and, and, you know, talk to you about what they do and, and how they're doing. And they'll probably slip in some money requests. I understand that, but I'm okay with that. So, so if, seeing support for that, we'll start that on the 15th. Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have an update to council regarding the public safety rescue and recovery response for the Tonto Basin tragedy. And I want to introduce Lieutenant Virgil Dodd. And he was, he was a part of the team out there under this very stressful search. And he was the PIO, Public Information Officer, worked in conjunction with the incident commander and very stressful job. And I, I know I had various conversations with him. He was, he was out there under a very hard situation and, you know, accountability and safety for the people out there and, and also searching for the three of the survivors or the, the victims. So I give it to you, Lieutenant.
Mayor, council members and members of the public, good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. For the viewers out there, again, my name is Virgil Dodd. I'm the Patrol Lieutenant with the Hila County Sheriff's Office. We'd like to give our deepest condolences to the Rawlings family who have lost three young children in this recent tragedy. We hope that they find some closure, some peace during these difficult times. Our prayers and our thoughts are with them. Just to give you a little update on the Willa search, six-year-old Willa was found last Friday after she was swept away from raging water, in raging water in the Tonto, in the Tonto Basin area, in the Tonto Creek from the Bar X Crossing. She was, she was recovered in the lake near Indian Point, which is located north of Roosevelt Lake. Strong water currents carried Willa about eight miles downstream from where the incident occurred. We're thankful and relieved that Colby, Austin and Willa were found. During this extensive search, we've deployed and utilized so, so, so many resources out there, such as search and rescue teams, swiftwater teams, dive teams, canine teams, ground troops, public works, ATVs, boats, kayaks, kayaks, helicopters, drones and Sonar Emily. Multiple law enforcement and multiple fire departments were also involved in the, in the search. We coordinated with multiple, multiple search and rescue teams from seven different counties. We also had outpouring help and support from civilian volunteers from multiple communities, church members, family and family friends. Some of these folks were from different parts of Arizona. Some of them were from out of state. There was just so much love and support out there for the Rawlings family. It's amazing to see multiple communities joining together as one family. And, you know, every searcher out there was relentless and, and put in countless hours to try to find Willa. The recovery of Colby, Austin and Willa was a success because of all the support and, and help from the communities, civilian volunteers, search crews, rescue teams and other resources that we received during the search. Now for the public, because we do have canyons and creeks in the Globe Miami area, we would like to remind the public to stay away from flooded areas, especially during a flash flood. If you see signs that say, "Don't cross when flooded" or "Road closed," please obey them. They're posted for public safety. It's never safe to drive or walk through flooded areas. And remember, it only takes like two feet of water and remove a vehicle. And so please turn around and don't drown. That's basically all I have on the search. But we do want to thank the City of Globe for their help and support in a community crisis. We want to thank the Globe Fire Department for their help and support, along with other multiple agencies, specialty teams, volunteers and citizens that donated their time with the search. And Mayor, I know, I saw you out there. Thank you for coming out and helping us. The Globe Police Department had extended their help to us if we needed them. Thank you for their support and their partnership. We want to thank the Board of Supervisors to all the businesses, to all the restaurants and to all the citizens who donated their time, efforts and money to help provide food and drinks for our volunteers and search crews. The Vice Mayor also participated in that and we thank him for donating food from his restaurant. We appreciate that. There were so, so many volunteers that donated food and water. But just to name a few volunteers that helped transport these items were Evelyn Vargas from the Cobra Valley Community Hospital, Fred Barkome from Barkome Corporation and Carmen Casillas, a community advocate. Thanks to all of them for gathering food, drinks and delivering these items to the command post in Tonto Basin. All of them went over and beyond to help us with food and drinks. And just to get, and give you a little example, Carmen Casillas made contact with us every single day. She wanted to find out how many crew members were out there. She wanted to make sure that she brought enough food and drinks and utensils and everything that goes along with it. And she traveled back and forth to Tonto Basin from Globe every day, sometimes twice a day during this whole search operation. And again, thanks to everyone and thanks to the City of Globe. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Next we have recognition of Globe Public Safety personnel who responded to the Tonto Basin tragedy and special recognition to Carmen Casillas for her effortless support to the management and rescue teams. First, I would like to call the names. I know the initial response that night. I know the initial response that night, Globe Fire Department was part of that response. We had Captain Cormac responding, firefighter Michael Peterson, firefighter Angel Amato, firefighter Ryan Courtney, and reserve firefighter Danny Tope that won the initial response. And when they got out there, they were part of the initial setup of the incident command. They also were part of the treatment team that treated one of the male subjects, the father out there, and a couple of the kids who were rescued off the island. These individuals, couple of individuals, were also put up on a helicopter to do the initial search that night, to see if they could locate the, the three children that were missing. And throughout the search, I know that Joe and Evil were sent out as additional resources also for a couple of days to, in the search. So, if you guys could come up, we just want to recognize you. I think Captain Cormac is here, and Joe, we want to thank you for, for your efforts out there. I also want to thank Chief Walters and the Globe Police Department for offering their assistance as needed, and they would take over any assisting calls that might occur within the community, because they were, their, their resources were out there. Just a little bit about fire, because that's my passion. Not only are they specialized, trained in fighting fires and treating, doing medical treatment, there's also, also specialized treatment that some of these individuals go through. And they're, they're trained in rope rescue, high and low angle, technical rescue, swiftwater. We also had a dive team and extrication. So, there's a lot of training that goes on beyond just fire and medical with our department. And I'm proud to say that this department has those individuals, and we have them, especially in our rural area. It's really difficult to get those resources when they're truly needed in a timely manner. So, I want to thank you guys for your response. And our council wants to thank you for your response in our community. Thank you.
So, I'd just like to add too, we can't, we can't possibly thank or acknowledge every person that went out there, because there were just so many. But, you know, we have a very awesome contractor that's working, that is from Sholo, that's, that's working here putting water lines in. And they took, they, it's Apache Underground. They, Mark is the owner of that company, and he's, at his own expense, spent three days with his heavy equipment, big excavators, and his men, that he's paying a lot of money per hour to go out there and, and search. I mean, this was, what an awesome thing for somebody that isn't even from this community, but, but was here working, has been here working, and, you know, took it upon themselves to go out there and do that. So, I'd really like to thank, thank the Apache Underground crew. They, like I said, I'm sorry, we can't, we can't possibly recognize everybody. We don't even know who so many of the people were. But that, they went above and beyond, those folks did.
Thank you, Charlene. And the next one is, I'd like to recognize Carmen Casillas. You know, she's a resident of our community, she's a past council member also. And the only reason I know what she did, I didn't know of the other ones also, but Carmen was in contact with me daily basis, making sure, she wanted to make sure these, that the, the teams out there had the fund, the food out there. And she wasn't just trying to make it possible for the command post, but there was another campsite out there also, the family members, and at times, it was a couple of hundred people out there. But on a daily basis, she was calling restaurants and getting donations, or getting funding that could buy food for these individuals. And then she would also, on her own time, go out there in her own vehicle and transport this food to the, to these camps. And sometimes it was twice a day. And Virgil said it all. I mean, that part, that was part of the logistics, but that's sure a load off the IC and the PIO to have to provide that food and make sure that these people are fed. Sometimes it was 50, sometimes it was 400. So, on behalf of the city council, we would like to recognize Carmen Casillas for your efforts. And I'll read the, the certificate we'd like to present you. So, it's a certification and recognition presented to Carmen Casillas. The Globe City Council would like to recognize Carmen Casillas for her regional support demonstrated as a City of Globe residence during the Tonto Basin search, rescue and recovery efforts of the management and rescue teams during the Tonto Basin tragedy. Signed, 17th day of December, 2019. Now, we go to our consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. Public hearing items are designated with an asterisk. Prior to consideration of the consent agenda, the mayor will ask whether any member of the public wishes to remove a public hearing item for separate consideration. Members of the council and/or staff may remove any item for separate consideration. A. Consideration of waiver of section 24 dash, 2 dash 4 dash 10A, prior discussion ruled to allow action on the balance of the consent agenda. Accounts payable, $287,102.68. Consideration of approval of council minutes. September 10th, 2019 council meeting minutes. September 24th, 2019 council meeting minutes. Consideration of agreements and purchases of less than $25,000. Consideration of November, November building permits. Consideration of fleet report. And E. Discussion and possible approval of a revised and enhanced bid schedule to the Apache Underground contract number CA-2019-0027, previously approved by council. Do we have anybody from the audience, from the staff, or the council would like to remove any of these items for separate consideration?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
We have a motion, and the second to approve consent is under further discussion. All those in favor signify.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Any abstaining? Motion passed. New business. Item A. Discussion and consideration of ordinance 861, an ordinance limiting license agreement holders in the number of parking spots that can be used in city parking lots. Shelley, can you read ordinance number 861, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And for the record, staff would like to disclose that the ordinance that was in the packet was a draft ordinance. Our city attorney has made some just technical changes to the ordinance, so there was one change in the, in the title, so the reading will reflect that. Ordinance number 861, an ordinance of the City of Globe, Arizona, amending the Globe City Code by amending section 8 dash 4 dash 1 to include vendors with license agreements to use city public parking lots and restrict the number of license agreement holders allowed at any one time, at any one city parking lot by adding section 8 dash 4 dash 1, dash C dash 1, license agreement holders parking restrictions. Is council pleased with that reading?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. If you remember, at the last council meeting, we approved a license agreement for the family to be able to utilize not only just the requested Old Dominion parking lot for their business, but we expanded that into all the public parking lots that the, the city has, including, you know, the ball fields and that sort of stuff. With us, a question came up, well, what if we get too many of these license agreement holders, and they're going to be utilizing too many of the parking spots? Well, this is what this ordinance is for, is to limit the number of people at any one time on any particular city parking lot. And, so, we have first come, first served, that sort of thing. Paul, did you want to add anything in further details? Paul kind of drafted the language for this.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yeah, this is in direct response to our fear that everybody congregates and we lose those parking spots. So, the, if, if they get, if we get additional people with license agreements, and let's say that there are six spots, is 20%, but seven of them show up, you know, they, they need to be there, they need to make sure that they have a copy of their licensing agreement, a copy of their business permit, or, I'm sorry, the proof of the insurance, and then some type of proof, we were trying to figure out how we make sure that, who got there first. This would be code enforcement that would enforce this, not PD. This is, this is a more of a civil violation of the code if we have too many people there. And so, we, we came up with a novel idea of taking a picture with your smartphone, which usually timestamps and geocodes your picture. And so, when, when they show up, they need to, you know, and we'll explain this as part of the process, and explain this as we get more and more people doing this, that when you go, get there, take a picture of your trailer or your business in that parking spot. And so, a bunch of other people come, when, when Michelle comes, you can show that, hey, I was here at this time. And if, if the person with the newest date that overfills, we can probably figure out. Now, I would say that what we're going to try to do is say, hey, this lot's full, let's get somebody to move down here. We're going to try to have that option, to ask them to, to balance out. And, and I think it's common sense, I don't think we're going to have any major brawls on this. But I just wanted to put some way of determining, you know, how do we determine, you know, who was the last person there, who was the person that overflowed the, the parking lot, if we have this problem in the future? So, this is first read, we'll, we'll be bringing it back. And, oh, the other thing is, doesn't apply, the limitations don't apply if it's a special event permit. And so, so, we'll make the change on the, on the text for the attorney. And then if you have any feedback on all the areas on this, this is our first run at this, to this problem, but the, any, the council have any thoughts on what we're doing here?
I do, I, I didn't see, and maybe, maybe it is in here, and I just am not reading this correctly, but we, we had discussed in the case of a special event, like Apache G or, or Cinco de Mayo, or what have you, that they are not allowed to use the parking lots, then? We discussed that at the last meeting.
They could, as part of the special event, they could belong to that special event if they choose to be a vendor for that special event, but.
If they've signed up with that. Yes.
Yes.
So, how do we get that in here? Or does it need to be?
That would be with the, the special event things that are already out there.
Not necessary for it to be in, in this document.
But, let's, let's say somebody wants to use some of the parking lots, and there is a special event going on, then they wouldn't have that opportunity. They could go down to the street to a separate parking lot.
Their, the special event permit details the, the scope, and it would, it would, I mean, it, it's not, the special event permit, if it's not approved with that vendor in there, that vendor's not allowed in, because that was not the. Special event permit will trump this business permit, then, in that, in that case? Yes. And, but, but there's no reason why we can't clarify that in there.
I'd like to see it clarified. The other thing I'd really like to ask is that we review this in one year, because, you know, I went over there to Old Dominion Parking Lot and looked the other day, and they were, Evolve was there, and they were, you know, the parade day, and they were there, set up very nicely. But there's 44 spaces there. If we're allowing 20%, that's eight spaces, well, it's actually 7.9 something, but, so, eight spaces. That's, that's well and good if the spaces aren't being used. But what if we allow this, and it becomes a problem? I'd really like us to just look at this again in one year's time and see if it is indeed working well.
You and I were talking about, about the special event that happened this weekend. Now, that weekend where they, they were with the bikes, they, they had taken up spots. But over here next to the courthouse where the, where the road was blocked off from block to block for the food vendors, there were only two vent, two food vendors all day long. So, if we, if we have a case where we have extra vendors that decide they want to participate in this special event, if there's room available, I think they should be allowed to set up over there.
Oh, I agree.
You know, just so we don't get into, like what you're saying.
And so, and that's, there's, there's two sides of this coin, maybe they would like to combine. We'd have to address.
Probably get better traffic anyway.
Right. We'd have to address that in, in there, but, but I could see, I see two scenarios. I see somebody that wants to not, okay, so, Cinco de Mayo, and they just want to crash it and, and pull their thing in, and there's limited spots. We need to have that, so we need to have a, but, but in the case of Oak Street between Hill and Broad, there's plenty of room, and they could have gone in there and, and shared in there. So, I think that illustrates that, that we could figure out some of the mechanics on, on this about adding them in. The, the most important thing is that, that by having that vendor license, they have insurance. And so, that's, that's the key thing, that any special event group wouldn't want to have somebody that's coming in as a partner not insured. And, and so, we'll have to, I would think that we would want the option if the vendor, the vendor should trump the, the special event permit, I'm sorry, the vendor should trump the, the licensing agreement, that, I'm sorry. I think the special, yeah. One more time. The special event group should have the, the yea or nay as to whether they let a vendor in. All right. So, we'll, we'll make them prior on that. But, and I think we should have the ability to say, if the, if the special event people are going to let you in, and we need these parking spots down here, let's recommend that, that you, you move to that. I think we have to have the ability on the fly to optimize, because parking was a shortage there. We already had these open spots. It would have been, it would have been consolidation, we could have freed up two spots for people coming to the parade. So, so, let's, we'll, when I'm in the, in the daytime and alert, I will wrap my head around this, and we'll try to write that in there, and then bring it back.
Does it need to go into this, or does it need to go into the special event?
I, yeah.
It might have to go into both of them.
Yeah. I think, I think in both. But, but let's make sure that we can get this in place.
Okay.
And we'll see how we get with the attorney, make sure we get this right, without being clear but not too wordy, which is my favorite thing.
Have exceptions.
Yeah, and, and the right labels.
Okay.
I have a question also. I understand you're first come, first served, and take a picture, a timeframe and shot, but under our documentation or our tracking system, wouldn't we predetermine that that 20% is already full, and therefore, if another vendor comes in, that we would say it's already full for that weekend? Wouldn't we be able to determine that in our tracking, in our documentation of the applications?
I'm, I'm assuming, and that, you know, every, every weekend, if somebody is a vendor, and they're going every weekend, they're showing up, and they're not really checking with us, they're just going to, they have that license, they have that right to go there. And, and there may be a bunch of people that have all told us that, I'm primarily going to be, you know, behind the huddle, I'm primarily going to be, you know, by the silver belt. But then all of a sudden, they decide to go there. I don't see them having to reserve the spot and indicate the spot every weekend that they go. The, we're giving them a licensing agreement that allows them to set up based on, on pre-existing permission. And that's why we wouldn't know it until we came across and found that there are a bunch of them in one location, and then we got to sort it out. But if I'm, I'm all, I mean, I, I can't think of a cleaner way of trying to figure out the fairness issue of who got there first, if it comes up.
I think, if I could, Mayor, if, I think to Charlene's point, if we review this in a year, we can then at that point have a better outlook as far as what parking lot works best, and if there is just one parking lot that we'd like to utilize for these type of vendors, then we say on Fridays and Saturdays, this is what we'll call that parking lot.
Yeah.
And move on from every, every single parking lot that we have, they can just go into.
Yeah. And, and so, no, that, exactly, we can, we can put this on the schedule, bring it back, take a look, but we'll have some experiences. We learned just from this weekend, you know, kind of what works. And we may, I don't think we'll learn anything between now and the 15th, but.
Meanwhile, you can verify exceptions.
What we know now, yeah. And, and the other thing, like, because I was thinking, okay, so downtown OD Parking Lot is busier during the week, but not so busy in the weekends. And so, I thought we could maybe weekend, weekday, but then you think about Community Center, that's not so busy during the week, and very busy in the weekend. So, I didn't try to do a weekday, weekend, just simplify it with 20% any day of the week. That was my thought there. So.
Just one more question. So, in the case of, and I'll take Evolve, the bike rental, they'll, they have the agreement, but they could very well set up at the Community Center. It's not very well, Old Dominion, they could set up wherever they want, then?
Right. But, but we want to have the right to say, you know, we need these spots right now, you know, can you move if we need to, or, and worth that out? So, we'll, we'll walk through that scenario.
So, do we have direction to bring this back?
Oh, we need a motion to move it forward, yes.
Move it back to the next.
Move it forward to the next meeting?
With the, with the recommended. With the, with the recommended changes.
With the recommended changes.
Second.
We have motion in second to move this item forward to the next meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. Thank you. Next, we have discussion and consideration to issue invitation for bid IFB number CS-2019-0056 for the waterborne pad construction and building erection to be funded out of account number 21-80-52250, CIP Water Construction.
Then, and Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I'm here for Jerry, Jerry's under the weather. And so this would allow us to go out to bid to find somebody to erect this building. And it's, it's very simple. It doesn't need to have the, the rule waived because when we find someone to, to do the work, we have to bring it back and approve their contract and everything like that. So, so a simple motion to approve the permission to go to bid.
So moved, as stated.
Second.
We have motion in second for approval. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. Next, we have discussion and possible approval of the Arizona Mutual Aid Compact Agreement to allow the Globe Police Department and the Globe Fire Department, as departments within the City of Globe, a political subdivision, to participate within the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs in the event of an emergency. Sergeant Haines, Chief Walters.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Staff Sergeant Haines has been working over the last seven months on getting us NIMS compliant for the department, and this is one of the steps. And so he volunteered to come up, he's the most familiar with it, to speak about this tonight and kind of educate everybody on what it, on what this is. Sergeant Haines?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. When I started back at the PD last year, one of the projects that Chief Walters had asked me to take on was to work towards ensuring that the police department was in compliance with the National Incident Management System standards, or NIMS for short. NIMS is a, just a universal, if you're not familiar, universal system developed by the Department of Homeland Security that offers a more organized and consistent structure for multiple agencies to be able to come together and to all be on the same page with the way that the scene is managed. Although the PD had a basic understanding of NIMS and what it entailed, we were far from being proficient and had not met different steps to become compliant with the standards. It was paramount that we become compliant as that is a requirement for being eligible to apply for certain federal grants. One of the goals that Chief Walters had mentioned is to be in a position to apply for grants, grant funds through the Homeland Security in early 2020. If we were to be selected, the grant funds would go towards updating our aged communication system in this region. The idea would be to use the funds to purchase new mobile and handheld radios, the computers for the vehicles, and to complete updates to the repeater system and dispatch, which would benefit multiple agencies throughout the local area. To begin the process of determining everything that was necessary to be considered compliant, I first met with the manager for the Hila County Emergency Services, Carl Malford. He went over with me the number of things, the number of steps that was necessary to become compliant with NIMS. And through further discussion, one of the things that we discovered was that we needed to have in place a signed Arizona Mutual Aid Compact on file with the Department of Emergents, with the Department of Emergency and Military Affairs. I'd presented that to Paul and the, and Chief Walters several months ago, and we started looking into what it would take to get that signed. The compact is basically tracked by the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs and is entered into by political jurisdictions within the state. There's a directory maintained on the webpage that lists every jurisdiction in the state and if they have a signed compact on file. The majority of jurisdictions in this state do have that, that Arizona MAC on file, and we're one of the few that don't. What the, what the compact basically does is it allows for us to assist other, other jurisdictions if there's a, an emergency or a disaster of some sort. The City of Globe is not mandated to provide any particular service, but would be listed as a jurisdiction that could potentially provide aid to another jurisdiction during a time of extreme need. Most importantly, by being a signatory of this compact, the City of Globe would be permitted to request assistance from other jurisdictions that have also signed the compact. In the event that we need additional assistance and resources, as stated, as stated, we were, if we were called upon for assistance, a determination would be made by the City of Globe as to the extent of assistance we would be able to provide, and we would also be permitted to request reimbursement for expenditures if we elected to assist. This evening, what we are requesting is approval from members of council for the City of Globe to be a signatory on this compact. Now, as I understand it, that is going to involve a resolution, so this would be the first step in, in that process.
Would we be able to produce our resolution by the next meeting for action?
Yes, we, we can loop this into a resolution and have final action. We don't have to have the resolution at this point. But, but well, the vote would be to motion to, you know, bring this forward as a resolution at the next available meeting, and then we can finalize it then.
So moved. This is a good thing.
Second.
We have motion in second for approval to move it forward to the next meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. Thank you. Next, we have action items, and we have discussion and possible approval of the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Globe and Hila County, giving each jurisdiction the right to permit, inspect, and perform planned reviews of objects, of projects within the other's jurisdiction. Chris.
And, Mr. Mayor, I just cut Chris off. I had, I'd had the last phone call with, with Scott Bazan, Bazan on this, and so I wanted to reflect that. What, what we have done to make this cleaner, based on feedback from the last meeting, let me walk through this. On the, the second page, 1A and 1B, it describes, let's deal with 1B, which says that this allows the county building, the county will review, approve the plans, and issue the required permits in connection therewith and perform required inspections. So it's plan review, inspection, permitting, based on their code, which is, according to Scott, 2012. But then the, the language we added, "The county shall comply with all additional city jurisdictional requirements applicable to the project not defined above." So instead of listing out all the things we could think of, because we started talking about flood, you know, flood approval and things like that, well, that's a federal thing, they have to do that anyway. And what if we do put something additional after we pass this, we didn't list it, and, and so then we'd have to come back, and it would be, we wouldn't be sure on that. We, we also did the, the opposite, we, it says that we have to comply with anything the county has to do. So we, we added that just to clarify, it's limited to, to that permitting, plan review, inspection. The other change we put on there was on the 30 days. So if you go to 11, Section 11 notices, and so the intent, the, either party has to notify the other party, their intent to exercise this agreement 30 days prior to one seeking approval from the County Board of Supervisors or the, or the Globe Council for construction of a qualifying product. So if they're going to their council, hopefully, and I think they will, but we just ensure is that they've come to us and they've talked to us about it, and initiated that they're going to be taking this over, so we don't read about it in the newspaper. Number two, that if they go to advertising on, on a bid for a qualified project, they'll have, they'll know they're doing it, they're advertising for a bid. I think that's another catch that would require them to come give us a heads up 30 days prior, or initiating any construction on a site pertaining to a qualifying project, whichever of these comes first, there'll be multiples. But on a small project, they may come up, and they got the money and the budget, and they're just going to start breaking ground on something, and we want them to, to let us know that, hey, they got this, you know, and, and just out of, I think that reflects the direction from council. We made the changes, sent it back to the county, they sent it, the county attorney, county attorney already signed off on it, so these, these are approved, and so we do final approval, this, this is the lane that will go. There was, in the, in the staff report, there is, we, we did the question on the, on who does fire approval, and in talking to Scott, and in our research and checking with our attorney, ARS Title 37 says that any county construction is, is under the jurisdiction of the fire marshal. In 371382E, we could be asked by the county and join into an, an IGA where we are the entity that would oversee the, the fire inspections. I think we had that before, it has expired, we do not have that now, and they're not, not asking for that. And so in answer to the question, if they were to come into Globe and build something, it would be their statutory requirements that they check with their fire marshal to make sure that their buildings are safe under what the fire marshal...
That'd be the state fire marshal.
The state fire marshal, yeah. Okay. And then the other, the other question on the, on the differences in, we're in the 2003 code, they're in 2012, and talking to Scott about that, he says that the 2012 reflects updated features of material and construction types, products, technology, and so, so their code is, has, has got newer stuff in. The one example he gave me was carbon monoxide alarms, you know, you have requirements for, for smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detector, that's something that isn't in 2003 for, because at that time, that technology was not as advanced. Now it is. It's also much more, 12 is much more efficiencies and environmental requirements, which are a little bit more of a hurdle to meet. And one of the things they do, they make a tighter building that doesn't allow carbon monoxide to release on its own, and so that's why, it's probably good to have, in, if you're doing 12, it's going to be a tighter building, you need that carbon monoxide protector. He said in any, in all cases, it is not less safe. The 2012 is equally as safe as, as the three. They, they do take some things in, some things out, but they're not reducing the, the safety requirements. But their inspectors or plan reviewers are geared towards and trained on 12, and that's why they, they want to do 12. And so hopefully I've answered all the questions and...
If this gets signed and approved, how will this affect such projects, such as like the Michelson Building?
They would be able to do the inspection on that. And I think there's, I'm, I'm not sure if there's a 30-day, no, I don't think this is, because it's not a resolution. So this would be, they'd have to go back, and they'd have to approve that, and then they'd have to request, and I don't know that they're going to. The, when, in talking to Scott, what they're, what is driving this is not the Michelson. I don't think they have any problems with that. This is their new animal control facility, multimillion dollar project, they're putting out the fairgrounds, is very modern technology, and this, that is the project that they're needing this for. And so we didn't even talk about Michelson, you know, so. Any questions? And then this would, it'd be motion for, to approve as an action item.
I would make a motion to approve the IGA with Hila County as presented.
Second.
We have motion in second and approval. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have discussion and consideration to add to the paid city holiday schedule as one time, one half day off, four hours on December 24, 2019, Christmas Eve, and one half day off, four hours on December 31, 2019, New Year's Eve, to fulfill council's desire to provide an incentive recognition for city employees to be funded out of budgeted funds set aside in account number 10-55-51001, General Fund Administrative, salaries and wages.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, there were some questions about how this would be applied, and so the, nothing has changed in the packet, it's the same, everything's the same, but the, I am able to explain, these two sets of four hours would be treated, treated as all holidays are, and let me explain how that would work. And the example I use is, is in, in police. And so on December 24, the police department would close early, they would close at noon rather than at 5:00, the operation of the office. And so Beth, who is a non-sworn officer, a non-sworn employee, would go home at four hours into her shift, and she would not work that second four hours, but she would be compensated with holiday pay for that four hours. Now, let's say there's an officer on duty there, he's working the, the 10-hour shift that he'll be working, he doesn't have the option to go home. When, when we're closed, he's still serving the public, he's still keeping the peace. And so he will work his normal shift, and, and when he gets paid for that work cycle, he will be given an additional four hours straight time for the time that he was not able to take off, and he'll be reimbursed for that. Now, let's say that, in this shift, there's A, B, and C shift, I'm not sure how they go, but there are shifts that shift officers are not on, and they're not, they're off that day, but they don't get the advantage of, of having the time to take off as they're already scheduled to be off, but since they're shift work, they would be also compensated for four hours in their paycheck during that paycheck cycle for the time that they would have been compensated if they had been working, or if they were on regular 40-hour week, they would have just gotten to go home. Does that help?
I know you're the one that was concerned about that.
Oh, that was, the, and, okay, so what, this was the, the scenario that you had seen historically, and that was a, a thought or an attempt, I don't know if it actually happened, that you could not pay shift workers and just have them take extra time off, but they're on a schedule. It doesn't even work with fire. Fire, you have, you know, you, you, these, these people, you have to have a level of coverage, you have to have so many people doing the 48 shifts, 48 hours. You, you can't just send one fire home early for four hours during a shift, because it just doesn't work. And so same with police, you have coverage requirements, you have minimum coverage requirements, and so there's, there's no sending each person off for an extra four hours off in their shift. Not wise, not recommended, not our policy. And so we would write, we would pay them the four hours straight time.
And that covers, explanation covers the way we do it with all paid holidays.
So, so this will be, I think, I think that if you wanted to include a stipulation, the stipulation be passage of this with the, the condition that this, eight hours total holiday pay be treated as all other holiday pay is treated through the personal policies and procedures.
Okay. So we have the fire chief here, and we have the police chief here.
Yes.
And, and your thoughts are, your, this policy is, is equitable, fair, you believe, to your employees?
Mayor and council, Councilwoman Giles, this was a great benefit to the, the employees, all employees of the city, and very kind gesture by council. This is fair. I mean, the reality of it is, is we work different hours, we work different length of hours, depending on what your assignment is, or if you're with PD or FD. This is about as fair as I think you could possibly make it from the standpoint of the city. And it's a great gesture, and it's, it's looked upon in my house as an extreme benefit, and, and everybody's very grateful for it. So I, I don't know that you can do anything different than that based off of this short time span and notice.
Okay.
And I know when, you know, back when...
And I know when, you know, back when, when, uh, some of the, the concerns came up previously, you know, we did, we did a lot of looking into it, and, and this seems to be a model that a lot of, a lot of municipalities use, as well as districts in, in how they treat holidays, and, and making sure that, that, uh, the employees in some way are, are recognized for, for a holiday that they may or may not be working.
Okay.
And, go ahead.
Oh, I just had one other comment that, you know, I, I think the employees are the backbone of this machine that we call the city. They need to be acknowledged above and beyond, um, they need to be thanked, they need to be acknowledged and thanked, sometimes a bit above and beyond just a paycheck. Um, I'm not making light of a paycheck, but, but sometimes we need to do a little bit more. I really wish we could have given them a check, that, that's really what I preferred. I really wanted eat, I know more than one or two of us up here wanted to be able to give them a paycheck, a, a, a bonus check, whatever we're allowed to call it or not allowed to call it, I, I don't even know now. We, we wanted to give them a check, we would just want to give them some cash, but if we can't do that, this is a good alternative.
Just as a comment also, that this is, uh, this is something that was a negotiator talked about in our last budget session, so this does not add a permanent four hours every year, we'd have to consider this back in the budget process this next year.
Correct. This, the, the acceptance of this is a one-time, one-time, meaning this Christmas holiday, um, and then we'll have to, we will, uh, have to build it into the budget, um, as you pass that, uh, in, in June, um, and we can have those conversations, uh, at that point. So that would be the, the proper time to insert this in there.
As we should.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion and second for approval. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Any abstaining? Motion pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have council will discuss and possible approve an application to the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, Brownsville Cleanup Grant to remediate potential contaminated material found in the rogue building adjacent to the, to the library, and Adria.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and council members. About a year ago, I came before the council and asked to apply for a grant, um, through ADEQ, the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, so that they could go into the rogue building and search for asbestos, and search for lead, and potentially search for mold. And we were able to get that grant, and so a few months ago, um, ADEQ had their people go in, um, hire a contractor to go in and evaluate it, um, and hopefully you, you all received that report. Um, it was a pretty lengthy report, it came in three parts, um, but what they did find was lead, asbestos, and mold. So while, while that trifecta sounds really awful, and it is really awful, um, the bright spot of it all is that it allows us to apply for a second part of that grant, which would actually allow for the remediation, and it is a non-matching grant, so it would not cost the city any money, um, and so I'm really excited, and I, I'm coming before you to ask for, um, permission to go ahead and apply for that second part of the grant, so that hopefully we can get that rogue building all cleaned up and move forward.
Adria, for the, for the public here, what's the amount of the grant you're going to apply for to remediate?
So I haven't been given an actual ballpark figure, um, the first part of the grant was an $8,700 grant, that's how much it costs for the contractors to go in. ADEQ pays the contractors specifically to do the work, so, um, it'll be Travis Barnum who receives the quotes, he's the one that deals with, um, the contractors and the agencies, he deals with them separately, he would be the one making the payments for all of the work, and so I don't have any, um, ballpark, ballpark quotes or anything like that. I mean, of course, it's mostly based on the size, you know, the size of the areas that they found in there.
It's got to be in the tens of thousands of dollars. Uh, that said, Adria, you, you and your crew sought out this grant on your own, um, we, we all, we all acknowledge the needs of the rogue building, and we all know that that would be a great way to expand our library, and we need that, the library's in such short, short space, we need, we need so much more space, but, okay, we didn't have the funds, and where do they come from? So thank you, thank you very much for doing this. This, this is, um, awesome, to, to find a non-matching grant is a, is a difficult task in itself, um, and we're all, this entire community's going to benefit hugely from this, so thank you. And Mary Helen's back there, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Nope, sounds good.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve and sign.
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve, uh, this, uh, subject. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay.
I was saying aye, but I was too late.
Maybe I'm too fast.
My mouth moved, but nothing came out. Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion pass. Thank you, Adria.
Thank you.
Do we have any late agenda items?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Second call to the public, any other scheduling of meetings?
Yes, so, um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, we had, uh, talked about a tradition here, and I, I apologize, we didn't talk about this sooner, is to have a, um, some type of council retreat, um, early in, uh, after the new year, and so, um, we were, staff was, was going to ask council, um, if they'd like to, to put together something, we're thinking between four and five hours, um, on a, uh, and either morning, afternoon, crossing over, um, I, I think the location would, would be, um, determined, we're, we're looking at the, the very nice facilities that, that the staff used last year at the casino, and the meeting rooms there are very, are just the right size, um, and, uh, we were looking at dates, um, uh, and it's hard for everybody to find a date, we were looking at the 20th, because that's a Monday, I know, I know Vice Mayor, I talked to him, Mondays are better, but the 20th is Martin Luther King Day, and so then we, we focused in on the, um, the 27th, which is our meeting date, and I, I do believe that, that we could swap out the actual second meeting in January, um, and just make that the retreat for, uh, I say four hours of work, five hours with, with some food in there.
27th is a Monday.
It's a Monday.
27th is a Monday also, and, um, if, if that would be the pleasure of council, we could, um, you know, set that up, we, uh, I know that Shelley did make a call out there, we don't, we have to check on availability, um, you, you contacted, but you did not get, um, they're, they're looking into it, um, but the earlier we decide, the sooner we can lock up the, the, um, the venue.
Yeah, what do we think about the 27th, which is a Monday, in lieu of that meeting, but with one challenge?
What's that?
That we don't stack up our next meeting for six hours.
But it will be, how, how, how could it not be?
No, we, we, um, we will do our, we will do our best, we can postpone some presentations we need to. What's that?
The 28th would work for me, because I've had.
The, the daytime 28?
The 27th, I have an appointment with my endocrinologist.
Okay, well, the.
I can change that if we're going to do the 27th, it's still early enough.
One of these meetings could be changed, so that way we're not having to stack up the next council meeting and be here until.
What I believe we could do is take the low-hanging fruit, some of the stuff that we need to do, and, and take 30 minutes and, and get that done at this retreat, we can still do the retreat with action, um, so I, I can keep from filling it up, um, and if, if there's something that was pressing, I know we could pull together a Thursday meeting or, or something at, um, in a matter, you know, we, we do pretty good on the half-an-hour Thursday meetings, so I'm, I'm not worried about, about that, the, um, uh, I think that, I think that we could work through this to where we miss that, that full-blown meeting. And the, the other thing is, is we're counseling a meeting that would have been at the county anyway, our facilities wouldn't be ready, so it, it kind of makes it, I don't want to, I've, I've heard rumors that if I try to pull a four-hour meeting at the county complex, that many people will be after me. So it's a good, it's a good incentive for me to, to try to keep those, these meetings, these, both these meetings at a minimum.
So what we're talking about is if we move it to the 28th, that's a morning meeting, daytime meeting, 28th, Tuesday?
It'd be primarily a retreat to talk about primarily.
Retreat, I'm sorry.
I can't commit to, to five hours on a work day.
Okay, well, well, so.
I'll stay as long as I can, that's all I can say.
And, and so let's have that conversation, do we want to do, do we want to do 8 to, to noon, do you want to do 10 to 2, do you want to do?
10 to 2 is out of the question, that's the main.
Noon to, noon to 4?
Eight, 8 to 12, or, or noon to 4 is better for me, 10 to 2 is like, you might as well just not be able to work at all.
I'm good with 8 to 12.
On which day?
On the Tuesday.
On Tuesday, I, I could do that.
28th?
28th.
Okay, what about the 27th, are we still meeting on the 27th?
No, we won't meet on the 27th.
Oh, yeah, 28th works for me anytime, yeah, whatever you guys want to do.
How about you, Fernando?
8 to 12?
Yeah, I can do 8, as long as I remember, yeah.
Where is that? Or we don't know yet. Casino, maybe?
28th, 8 to 12, and I, I, the only thing I don't know is about, um, Vice Mayor, because he's, he'll be working, I mean, I know he's open, but let me, you know.
Well, we'll vote yes for both of the councilmen missing today.
Yes, yeah.
We'll make him chairman.
No, I think, I think that would be fine, I think there's enough notice, I mean, we're, we're 45 days away, well, 30, you know, 40, that we can hopefully get the scheduling and, you know.
8 to 12 is good.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
And, um, now, on, on this, so, let me give you a little preview on, on what we're going to do with this, um, we're looking, we're, staff owes you, uh, the second quarter strategic action plan update, and so we will deliver that prior as preparation for this, um, this meeting. Also, I think the mayor will be facilitating this and, and try to make sure that we, we talk about the things that, that council wants to talk about. We can, we can talk more in the future about how we structure this, but I, I, I don't see this as going through everything, um, I think we go through those public projects, those high-profile things, the things that, that I think that, that are highest on your radar. Eventually, we'll be going into the budget process in, um, February or March, and we'll probably have to have some sort of second meeting where we talk about some, some budget priorities, I don't know how that looks, but I think, um, getting, um, council a chance to, to have their retreat and, and talk about what is the highest priority. I, I think, I think the staff could benefit from some focus on, on the SAP as to what is it, you know, there's a lot of things we're working on, where do you want us to put our energy? And so that's what I hope to get out of this, and what, and the mayor, and I know there's, traditionally, we, you know, things have changed, and we want to hear from, from council, staff, uh, we, we seek good direction so that we can, we can meet your, your priorities.
So we're bringing our wish lists.
Oh, yes, yes, and this one is even not even nice, that's, that's, this is past that, so.
Okay.
Other comments? We're good with that?
The 28th works for.
28th, 8 to 12, 7 to 1, or 7 to 11 is even better.
I'm, you know, I, if you guys want to do, I, you know, I can just stay up all night and I'll be there.
You could spend the night, you could spend the night at the casino.
Yeah, I, no, I, the, um, no, is, we're 8 to 12?
8 to 12.
Okay, all right. I know the mayor likes to scare me with that 7 a.m.
That's a little bit more realistic.
Yeah, okay.
Any future agenda items?
Our, our parking is coming up, our, our parking.
Yes, the, um, we, we are going to wait and do that on the 15th, well, I've seen the presentation, it's a wonderful presentation, but, um, Jerry wasn't here, and, uh, we will have that parking presentation on the, on the 15th.
Do we have motion to go in executive session?
So moved.
Motion to second to go in the executive session, all those in favor signify.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
And, Mr. Mayor, just for the audience, there's no intended action when we come out of East, and we'll just come out to adjourn.